Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City School Board Meeting. We're going to ask all to please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance and have a moment of silence.
(inaudible)
You may be seated. Good evening to all in attendance and to our board, Dr. Gilbert. If I could please get an approval of the agenda?
Please.
Second. There's been a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, sign of aye. Dr. Gilbert, communications?
Yes. Your first communication is November fourteenth through twentieth will be American Education Week. The theme for this week is Great Public Schools: A Basic Right and Our Responsibility. I'd also like to remind the board that we do have our City Schools Foundation Fashion Show that will be this Saturday at eleven o'clock at the Stones River Country Club, and we certainly appreciate the work of Cheryl Harris with this and the foundation. We have a special guest tonight. We have Ms. Gracie Porter. I had actually heard of this lady through some of my graduate students. They were talking about how supportive she was of public schools, of course, being a member of the Metro School Board. But she is here tonight representing T S B A. She is the Mid Cumberland District Director, and she will be presenting you with an Excellence in Education Award for the Mobile Health Unit for this quarter. And in addition, this is the overall winner for the year. So, Ms. Wade, if you'd like to come down, please, and Ms. Porter, if you would like to take the podium.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, to the board, to Madam Chair, and to our Superintendent, Dr. Gilbert. It's a pleasure to be here, and I am honored to present this award to the Metro, uh, excuse me, to the Murfreesboro City Schools. I just left our board meeting, so therefore I still have Metro on the brain. I would like to share with you tonight for the purpose of the audience to understand how and why you got such a prestigious award. Each quarter, T S B A recognizes outstanding programs in local school systems with the Award of Excellence in Education Program. The criteria to be considered in selecting award-winning programs include uniqueness, adaptability, and involvement of the community and evidence of success. T S B A Board of Directors, members, staff, the school board itself, a local superintendent, school board members are representative of the school district, may submit nominations for awards in winning this particular award and the winning programs. On behalf of the Tennessee School Board Association, I am proud to present the Award of Excellence in Education Program to the Murfreesboro City School Board for their vision and also for what you do for students across the district. This Mobile Health Unit program. Poor health is a barrier to students' learning, and families with poor physical or mental health can become barriers to students' learning. The mobile unit is removing those barriers. The M H U serves the children and families of Murfreesboro City Schools, employees of the district, and the great Murfreesboro community. The M H U removes basic barriers to learning by providing primary care services to children and families, mental health assessment, intervention, and support and preventive and health education. This is achieved through a network of relationships with the Murfreesboro City Schools from organizations that include the Primary Care and Hope Clinic, Rutherford County, which provides a family nurse practitioner one day a week, a pediatric nurse practitioner one day a week, and a nursing assistant. The Guidance Center of Rutherford County, which provides a case manager two days per week, and employs telemedic medicine for patients to have access to a therapist and nurse practitioner with an emphasis in mental health. And Middle Tennessee Medical Center, which provides funding for the mobile unit itself, an oversized recreational vehicle that has two examining rooms and a waiting area. The salary of the Health Outreach Coordinator, some provisions for supplies, and recently has been awarded funding for a dedicated driver and maintenance personnel for the unit. In addition, the M H U is part of the Community Outreach Program collaboratively developed by the Murfreesboro Police Department, Parks and Recreation Department, Middle Tennessee State University, various faith-based organizations, and the Murfreesboro Housing Authority to meet the needs of the whole child by achieving synergy between the school community and the large community itself. Data from coordinated health, school health programs, the Guidance Center, and the Middle Tennessee Medical Centers' Community Needs Assessment demonstrate consistent themes and needs for our population: well checks, immunizations, primary care, mental health, In addition, the MHU is part of the Community Outreach Program collaboratively developed by the Murfreesboro Police Department, Parks and Recreation Department, Middle Tennessee State University, various faith-based organizations, and the Murfreesboro Housing Authority to meet the needs of the whole child by achieving synergy between the school community and the large community itself. Data from coordinated health, school health programs, the Guidance Center, and the Middle Tennessee Medical Center's Community Needs Assessment demonstrate consistent themes and needs for our population. Well checks, immunizations, primary care, mental health, obesity, the prevalence of drugs, and sexual mis- pers- 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 security. I knew I'd do that. And violence. With its provisions to direct services, ability to counsel and refer, and access to educational resources. The Mobile Health Unit is beginning to address those needs. And I would like to leave this thought with you. As Maya Angelou has said, I've learned that making a living is not the same as making a life. And this is certainly something that your school district, your director of schools, your school board, and your community has felt a need, and you have delivered. I say thank you on a personal note. And from TSBA, we want to say thank you for the work that you are doing across this district. So at this time, this award reads, Tennessee School Board Association, 2010 Award for Excellence in Education Programs, presented to the Murfreesboro City School Boards of Education in recognition of the Mobile Health Unit. Thank you so very much.
On behalf of Dr. Gilbert, our director, and the members of the Murfreesboro City School Board, and Ms. Farrell that's on that bus, and I know Dr. Gilbert can call many more names. As a member of the school board, we are so appreciative to TSBA for this recognition. And thank you, Ms. Porter, for taking out of your busy schedule to bring it to us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just want to take a minute and congratulate Dr. Gilbert and all the partners who were able to envision what this Mobile Health Unit could mean to our children and families of Murfreesboro City Schools. And not just envision it, but put legs on it and make it happen. Congratulations and thank you to all those folks.
Well, thank you very much. And I do want to acknowledge Kathy Farrell. Certainly, meeting her a few years ago on the Child Advocacy Center Award proved to be very fortuitous. Also, I want to thank Gary Anderson for his courage in asking if we could find the Mobile Health Unit and get it back. And certainly thank the Middle Tennessee Medical Center and also the Guidance Center and Primary Care Hope Clinic. They have been tremendous. And so, we really appreciate them. In conjunction with that, Tim Glover has announced that we did receive, Middle Tennessee Medical Center did receive a 2010 Ascension Health Partnership Ministry Grant. And so, we have received the official word of that, and that will be used to help support the Mobile Health Unit. It is a two-year grant. We will be having a six-month celebration of the Mobile Health Unit. It's only been in business now six months again, and it will be held on October 28th from 4:30 to 6:00 on the Civic Plaza. So, thank you very much for your support of that unit. And it continues to expand and to work miracles in partnership with our special education folks and with Tanya Hobbs and the Social Work Unit. We just really are very proud of the results that we're seeing with that in our schools. The Excellence in Education Celebration honoring Congressman Bart Gordon will be held March the 11th, and a fun run will proceed that day. And I want to ask, Dr. Andrews, do you want to add anything about that particular celebration at this time?
Well, we're really excited about it. This is really an opportunity for the community to thank Congressman Gordon for his years of service. And of course, he will have, he will no longer be a congressman then, but he's certainly been, done a lot for Tennessee on Capitol Hill, and we appreciate that. And it's really appropriate, too, that we're going to have a fun run. You know, he's won the race in DC for many years. So, you know, we're hoping that all the, that most of the children will make it. And we're hoping to have a lot of people turn out to run with Bart Gordon. So, I think it's going to be a great event and a wonderful celebration. And there will be more information coming out monthly about what we're going to be, what we're going to be doing that day.
All right. Thank you very much. Most of you know that Reverend Ron Kerdoff headed up, really an organization of churches, a group of churches, in fact, about 17 churches, that participated in Beyond the Walls Sunday. And we certainly have benefited with that, from that. We had every school that received services from these folks. They were working on landscaping. They were digging. They were cutting trees. So, a lot of work. And I think we had about 3,000 people. So, it was a real blessing to have them. And we look forward to expanding our relationship with them. But I do appreciate Reverend Pastor Kerdoff, and also appreciate very much Larry Wilford and his work with them. He went to each school and prepared the work for them, had the paint there, had the mulch there. And also appreciate the principals with meeting with these pastors before the actual day and being there that day. So, tremendous, tremendous day in Murfreesboro. We were privileged, some of us, to attend the National Hispanic Chamber of Commerce last week, I believe. And Marcela Tapia received a certificate of recognition there for the Hispanic Community Civic Advocacy that she does. This was a major award. And so, we are just thrilled that she received this award. And it was, it was great to see her recognized. The governor was there. Several state representatives were there. And so, it was a real blessing to see her received what she deserves, certainly. Also, Pam East has been recognized. She applied and has been accepted as a Regional Value Added Specialist. She will be working with districts across the Mid Cumberland area. And certainly will be working with our district-level team as far as disaggregating test scores and looking at what we can do to improve instruction. So, Pam has been on the committee that has been looking at assessment. And so, we certainly, in teacher evaluation, we certainly are very pleased that she is now in a new role. She, of course, is still working here in the district, but she has been to several days of training and has some more to do. And we're just thrilled that she has been recognized for that. We have officially received a Project Diabetes Grant. This will be funding for $250,000 from the State's Department of Health. Some of you are aware of the Get Fit Kids BAM Program, which is Body and Mind Program, that has been in a couple of our schools. This will expand that program throughout our district. This is a program in which the families set goals. They set physical fitness goals and also nutrition goals. We'll be working very strongly with the Health Department. Also, we'll be working with Middle Tennessee State University to provide coaches for our families. So, really appreciate Andrea Kane's work with that and also Kev Dabney's work with that. And I want to skip down. I want to congratulate John Pittard Elementary's teacher, Cindy Bior, who collected more phone books for recycling than any other participant. Now, I know Cindy, and I know that Cindy and Jim talk a lot, but I'm not sure that she did this on her own. I have a feeling that she probably had a lot of help for her students. So, congratulations to Cindy for that. And then last, as far as your communications, I had the privilege this last Saturday of attending the Music City Best Competition. BEST stands for Boosting Engineering, Science, and Technology. And Discovery School was a participant in that. And I thought that what they have accomplished was so significant that we really needed for them to come share that with you. As you know, we have seen certainly from TSBA and across other organizations the importance that we have here in Tennessee for boosting science and math. And certainly, engineering does that. So, I'm going to introduce at this time Stacy Burke, who is one of the sixth-grade teachers. She works with Kristy Mall very closely. But the Discovery School did receive three major awards. And I'd like for them to take just a few minutes to talk with you. And they have some students with them and also some parents. But Stacy, if you could come forward and share a little bit. And then I think we're actually going to let you see the robot and see what it will do, too. So, Stacy.
Good evening. I'm thrilled to be here. But more importantly, I can't wait for you to hear from our students about this program. And it's an endeavor that I knew about coming from the state of Florida and basically dropped the bomb on Kristy, my teaching partner. And she stepped up. And it's definitely a team effort. Now with Mary Cunningham on board and David Winton as well. So, I'm going to let Kristy speak to you specifically because she's much better at this than I am. So, Kristy's going to give you the details, the ins and the outs about BEST Robotics. But it's a phenomenal program for middle and high school students, so.
When Stacy came to our school three years ago, she told me that there was this program called the BEST Robotics Team. And I thought, well, certainly, okay, we can do robotics, having no idea of what I was getting into and how in-depth it is. And I have to tell you, we are now in our third year, and I've never been more proud of the program that we are doing. Just to give you an idea of what the Robotics Team is, it's not just about creating a robot, which is one of the big challenges. We go through training at David Lipscomb, and we are introduced to the challenge. We're given a box of supplies and six weeks to build it. Simply, that's it. And we are competing against high schools from Illinois and across the state of Tennessee. And we are the youngest of all of the teams. We, since we are only a K-36 school, we have sixth graders competing against children who drove themselves to the competition. And it's quite an experience. Some of the kids will tell you they've never felt so small in their lives in comparison. But one of the things that we've been the most proud of is that we're not only able to hold our own, but we have been able to advance each year in the awards. Now, to give you an idea of what some of this entails, because it's not just building a robot. We have a booth and table competition. We have to create a website. We have to create a project engineering notebook. We have to compete spirit and sportsmanship. We have an oral presentation team that presents a marketing plan to a group of judges. We have a design team. We have a robotics team. We have an iMovie team. Fundraising chair, who helps us raise money and sponsors. We have a publicity chairman. And we have a t-shirt design team. All of these are done by the children. And we simply mentor them. So, as we have competed this year, we are very proud of Mary Cunningham, who is, of course, our art teacher at Discovery School. And we were able to snag her and rope her in last year when we realized this was too much for the two of us. And she has stepped up and done a phenomenal job. And I'm proud to say that Ms. Cunningham was voted the best teacher mentor for the year, this year. So, we're very proud of that award. And in addition, we also won Best Spirit and Sportsmanship. And we are thankful that Mr. Winton stepped up for his first year this year to help us with that. And now, he's hooked. So, we're hoping the more people we can suck into this, the better, because it is such an awesome task, as you can hear. And we also won Best T-Shirt Design, which is always a source of pride for us because our children are so creative. And it's amazing. Our t-shirt this year was designed by a fifth grader. And they allowed us to bring four fifth graders and mentor them in, since we are at such a disadvantage age-wise. Now, I have brought some of the students here for you to meet. This is Olivia and Brandon. And these are students that were on our team last year. And if they go to a middle school that does not offer this program, then they are allowed to come back as mentors. So, they were our seventh graders that were mentors. And then Ben is here. He was one of our programmers. So, he's actually in sixth grade. And then OG also came back from seventh grade. And she helped with the program as well. A lot of our team tonight is actually playing basketball. So, multi-talented. So, I know, we can do robots and play ball. So, they're going to tell you a little bit about what they did. And then I need to tell you a little bit about Mr. Sharma's job, because it's amazing. So, you want to start?
Thank you for letting us come here. I just like to say through that first, I have a sore throat, so I'm not going to be talking very loud. I was helping with programming. And we used E-Z-C to program our robot. It's a beginner programming session, because this is my first year, of course. We were able to program the motors on the robot and the servos. And the engineers can tell you about that later. And I was also helping the engineers. And I guess, I'm not an engineer, so they can tell you about that, so.
Thank you.
Well, I was with engineering. And what we did, we thought of the design of the robot. We started with prototypes. We followed the engineering design process. We thought of ideas. We shot on ideas. And then we built prototypes. And then we just started building. And then one of the hardest things was saying no, that we can't do this. And yes, we can do this. And no, we can't do this again. It's just a lot of fun to do it.
And one of the things that we have to say, too, is Brandon and Olivia did dual roles. We actually have to create a company and a marketing plan and all of that as well. And Olivia was the president of our company this time. And she helped lead the group in things that they needed to do and tasks that they needed to perform. And she and Brandon also stepped up on our marketing presentation team and presented information about the robot to them. But none of this would be possible if not for the parents that we had that were involved as well, because the four of us teachers couldn't possibly do everything that needs to be done. And so, we were very blessed to have Ben Nelson that had helped with the programming and spent many, many hours at the school helping with the programmers. And I'd also like to introduce you to Mr. Naveen Sharma. And Mr. Sharma is an engineer that came in and worked with the kids. And so, at this point, these children, who started off without knowing a whole lot about how to build things, can now tell you the difference between the different types of screws and what they do, what a servo's load weight is and things like that. And they understand things so much better than we possibly could, because they've been so involved. This is, this is something the children do. We don't do it for them. We mentor them. We guide them. But they do the work. They're sitting there with the power saw and cutting out the wheels, which I know is a little frightening. But there's a safety plan as well. And we have all of this involvement. We have a portable behind the school that we're using for that. And we're right there with them, hand in hand. But the design is theirs. Everything about it is theirs. Would you like to say a little bit?
Yeah. Thank you very much. It's an excellent program for our kids. It gives them an opportunity to apply the principles of science, math, and technology, and really build something which does cool stuff. And if you get a chance, we can show you to move this robot around. I really wish that if we can have more programs like this in more schools. We need teachers like Ms. Burke and Ms. Mall. They are really pushing these kids to achieve higher level. And these are the kids, when they grow up, you know, start working, they will build companies like Microsoft, Cisco, and IBM. It's a, it's a good way to build a strong foundation for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think one of the things, you guys mentioned the robot. One of the things that we're the most proud of as well is, you know, these children, when they leave our school system, they're still our children. They're still our family. And we are so proud of Central, because a lot of our kids are on that robotics team that started with our program two years ago. And I mean, I just get teary thinking about the fact that my engineering notebook crew from sixth grade won the best engineering notebook in eighth grade. And to see that they actually were successful enough. We had, what was it, close to 20, 20 students from Discovery School on their team. And they have advanced to the regionals and are going to compete at Auburn. And we're going there to cheer them on, because we're just so incredibly proud of what they've achieved. Because we've given them this basis. And we have children that are coming back now and saying, when I grow up, I want to be an engineer. When I grow up, I want to be a graphic artist. When I grow up, I want to do marketing presentations. And that is the greatest thing, to know that a program like this is available for them to find out their strengths and realize that that is something that they would like to do. Or even with Ben, with his programming in C language. And he gets it there and tell you and reprogram it so that it was driving tank-style instead of driving the way it was before. It's just amazing. So, the kids would really like to show you the robot. And with the design, one of the things that we had to do, we're given a task. The first year, we had to assemble an airplane, combining parts. The second year, we had to assimilate chemical compounds for alternative fuels and getting different objects worth points. And in this case, we had to use the Six Sigma process, which we worked with Square D. And they explained to us how Six Sigma is used in manufacturing in order to learn how to eliminate defects so that you have the lowest margin of error. And we actually had a student that got to do a phone conference with Six Sigma. And that was our first phone conference. And she got to conference with a black belt and a yellow belt. And with her, asking questions so that they could teach her all about what the Six Sigma program is. So, I mean, it's just, it's an amazing program. So, I'd like for you to take a look at our robot. You can just drive it forward.
The robot was supposed to perform certain tasks, pick up some golf balls, cones, which represent defective and good objects in an assembly line environment. So, it has an arm that moves up and down. It has a claw that picks up objects to perform the task.
That's so cool. Mm-hmm. Okay. It's awesome. And I think what the most amazing thing is, when you were looking at this, this is not a kit. This is a box of pieces of wood and PVC pipe and wires that were handed, and servos and motors. This is not something where they come with a design and say, here. It's just a box of random stuff. And we have to figure out how we can put it together with what's in that box to come up with our design to perform the task. And the kids had to do that. The funnel that they built was created so that you could load the golf balls into it. And when they backed it into a bin, it has a plexiglass strip, which they cut out of plexiglass. And the plexi sticks down so that they could dump the golf balls into the bins so that they could be sorted by colors for defects. And little things like that. And this was all done by the kids. Everything from having to have counterweights to affect the movement of the arm, to the strength of the servos on the wheels, the number of servos assigned to the wheels, all of that. The kids can tell you how they did it. I know from listening to them talk, that they did the work. And I think that is just remarkable. These kids have so much potential. And we're just so blessed to have opportunities like this and wonderful parents and teachers that are willing to step up and help them with projects like these. So, thank you so much.
Ms. Phillips?
I had an opportunity to play with that out in the... And it was such an amazing thing. And what an amazing program. Thank you, teachers and parents and kids, the kids who are here and not here. It's such an all-encompassing program. I've never heard of one like it. And I'm so impressed by what you all are able to do. Now, as I told a gentleman earlier, if you can make me one that washes dishes, I'll be excited. That'd be good, yeah.
And I have to say that I think the thing that I'm most proud of is, in all three years, we have never walked away without an award. In all three years, we have been at the highest disadvantage age-wise and with returning students, because if our students go to a middle school where the program's offered, they cannot come back and mentor. And that really made it difficult this year. That was a challenge to overcome. But I've been so proud, because the students step up and they do perform so well under pressure against what would seem insurmountable odds. And one of the cutest things that one of the parents said, that's the parent now of an eighth grader that was through our program. And he said, you know, they should have a special category just for you, because you guys are at such a disadvantage. You realize, there's no way you can win. And he just kept going on. And I said, one of these days, we're going to come up and we're going to win this. And we're going to shock you guys, because we're going to be the underdogs that came up in the little 10, 11, and 12-year-olds who beat the 18-year-olds. And he just laughed. And he said, yeah, you're right. Because you're here and you're doing it. And these kids are capable. And you guys believe in it, so it can happen. And so, I'm just, I'm so proud of this program and proud of the opportunity. It's a lot of long hours. It's a lot of time. But it is so well worth it to see what it's building in these children.
I do encourage you to go watch the competition. It's really amazing. It was in the gym at Lipscomb. And it really is almost a sports atmosphere. And what was neat about our kids, too,